And she does it in a unique way. All of the volunteers are very well trained and she has very high expectations of how this service is rendered. The Volunteer Aging Council helps supplement the money that we receive through the regional commission of nutrition program. But Benny's going to also tell you some additional ways that they have helped Cherokee County senior services. And we appreciate the city taking this time to recognize older Americans for us because we're all getting embarrassed, you know, day at a time. Benny, would you come?
Thank you, Nathan. And Mayor Council, thank you for the opportunity to come share with you about the Volunteer Aging Council. Currently serving as the chair for this year. You may hear us referred to as the Cherokee County Volunteer Aging Council. Or you may hear us referred to as the Volunteer Aging Council or the VAC. Our purpose is to support the Cherokee County senior services in education, awareness, and fundraising. As you're aware, as government agency, Cherokee County Senior Services, they're limited on some things they can do as far as fundraising, as grants. So we act as a 501(c)(3) organization over 10 years old to facilitate some of that fundraising awareness and education for Cherokee senior services. Membership in the Volunteer Aging Council is open to all members of Cherokee County. And we seek to have representation from each of the cities on our council thing to those who join us on that. And we encourage anyone and everyone that's interested to see me. You have a brochure in front of you. I have some additional ones. We'd love to have you be part of that. We meet the fourth Tuesday of each month at the YMCA currently and conduct our business at that point. Again, as a nonprofit, we can facilitate some of the fundraising and some activities that Nathan is limited to doing. You know, we're all blessed to live in the county and the city that's very affluent. But as many of you know, there are many people in our community that have basic needs not met. And our senior population is particularly hit on that. You may be surprised if you visit some with Nathan or some of the volunteer people that work in the community just how much the need is out there in our community. And as our population moves older, those needs are going to be greater. So we want to be part of that solution, part of that effort to meet those needs in the future as they come about. Nathan mentioned some of the things that we do and Meals on Wheels or home delivered meals are one of our big supporting areas. We support that with funds. We also monthly buy supplements that are prescribed by doctors for those seniors. We use the Cherokee Senior Services as a clearinghouse for us. We don't go out and do anything without Nathan's approval. He's the expert. He's got the staff that can assess the needs of the people. We take our guidance from him and then act in accordance with that. A little personal testimony, I have in-laws in Tennessee and they have benefited from the Meals on Wheels program. Not only is it a nutritious meal, and Nathan didn't get to give you this spiel, now it is nutritious, okay? That's as far as we're going to go with that meal. But more importantly than that, it's the contact. That Meals on Wheels person that delivers that may be the only contact that that person has that day. And I saw a tremendous improvement in my in-laws from that day visit, both the nutritional value but also just that simple visit. So I'm sure you may have some of those personal testimonies too. We also have refund and a person fund called our Last Shop. When Nathan has a need with some of his seniors, he calls us and we provide money for electric bills, doctor bills, pharmacy needs, whatever the case may be on that. One activity we've got coming up soon is the fan drive. We distribute fans as the summer comes on. Any older adults need a fan, want a fan, we make those available to them for a charge. That promotion will be kicking off in the next month. So I encourage you to be a part of that through either donating money, donating a fan, or making people aware of that, that the fans are available. And you'll hear more about that as we come up. We also work to make a senior citizen's home more accessible through a ramp or modifications to their home. And we do that as, again, as the needs come up. So let me challenge you to get involved, not be aware of the seniors, be an advocate for the seniors and help us as we meet those needs coming up in the near future. Be glad to answer any questions or comments if you have. And again, thank you for the opportunity to come and share this with you. We've got a fundraiser coming up. When's that coming, Adele?
August 20th.
August 20th. It's our largest fundraiser. It'll be a gala and dinner and dance. I'm not sure what all she's got planned. So hope you all be aware of that. Come support us. We'll have silent and live auction at that time. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Nathan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's time for our 10-minute public input period and we have one individual missing, Marsha.
Let me have just a few minutes. I wanted to let you all know that we have been working with one of our existing industries, Universal Alloy Corporation, in Canton-Cherokee Park, on a potential expansion of their facility of about 85,000 square feet and approximately 27 million in investment. And as y'all know in this day, that's a pretty big deal. They currently have over 200 employees at their location. And if this all goes through, they could add another 60 or so jobs to this facility. They would like for you all to consider discounting or waiving some of the fees that would be associated with the expansion. As y'all know, it's a really competitive market. They have locations in other places besides Canton. And we want to make sure that they do this expansion in Cherokee County and in Canton. And they would like to be placed on the agenda for your upcoming meeting if you all are agreeable to that, to answer further questions and talk to you more about the plans. So just wanted to bring that before y'all so we were in the loop of what was being discussed and hopefully will happen in the near future.
Thank you. If I have any questions, I know it's kind of, that's a little bit late, but I have met with them along with Steve Alco, the chairman of the development of Tennessee. And there's several things that they've asked for. I don't know if they get it all, but they have asked several things. One of which is a parking arrangement while they are expanding their plant there. They've asked if they could park along the edge of the road within that park itself. This is along Lamar-Haley Parkway. And they would actually have part of their car over in the road, some of it off up on the shoulder and kind of a parallel parking arrangement is what their request was. My suggestion to them was that, you know, I personally didn't have any problem with it, but if they needed to really, I think it would help them get approval from this property. Perhaps if they would contact any property owner that is along there to make sure that they would not be interfering with them and that they would not object any way. They did say, she mentioned up to 60, they did say actually by 2014 they'd be looking to add around 90 employees, which is a pretty good lick. And as you said, this man time, it really is. It's a tremendous investment. You know, we already approved, I guess for the second time, this city has a little grinning of some more right of way there at the cul-de-sac for them to accomplish this building. So, you know, anytime you can add 90 employees or so, or even 60 in the city, you need to try to work with them. And we do want to work with them. I know we can't give everything away to everybody, but we do need to work with them. And they'll be looking at certain, if asked about impact fees and certain other tap fees and permit fees, if they could be either waived or reduced in any way. Now, we kind of know the situation on impact fees, I think, but that's something that we talk about. You know, you can't do this for every business. There's no doubt about that. I don't think we can do it and keep the same business ourselves. But, you know, when someone comes to you and they're looking to add another 90 employees to your area in this kind of economy, you've got to really want to help all you can. And I didn't mean you can do everything. You can even at least look at it. And so that's what we'll be doing. And they have asked us, as Missy indicated, to come and be on our agenda to make some of those requests at our next meeting. But she wanted to make sure that we were aware that this was going on and it wouldn't be a surprise or anything like that for them to come in and ask some kind of action be taken, you know, at that particular time. Now, I would hope that, you know, I think Mr. Patton and Mr. Crosby probably have talked to them and they kind of know what some of their requests are. And Missy, I would like to correct one thing that I was unaware of. I just found out today. I had spoken with Mr. Patton and Mr. Crosby and, you know, I actually conveyed to the people that Mr. Patton didn't understand where and why they paid a sewer tap fee to begin with. And which was our conversation, I think, but I think he's gone back and looked at it. And there is apparently some reason why they paid the $20,000 sewer tap fee. So that's something that if you don't mind, I would ask that you convey to them that they may need to get back to Mr. Patton and Mr. Crosby or whomever they talked to. And make sure everybody is of the same understanding on that issue. So, but anyway, there are a number of issues and that they're going to come up the next meeting and make that, make a request and if we can have one. Yes, sir.
Just a question, perhaps it'd be better if we would have some Mr. Patton and Mr. Crosby and maybe the mayor and somebody else from the council meet with them prior to the meeting so we don't have a whole bunch of data floating around at the meeting and take a lot of time and not really get anywhere. So we...
I'd be happy. I'd be happy to meet with Mr. Patton and whomever else he has with them prior to that, prior to the next meeting so that we got a good idea. And any information that we have, I would hope that we would have some written correspondence for the council to be looking at prior to that meeting. for the council to be looking at prior to that meeting. So we would all have an idea of what the requests would be, we wouldn't just come in and ask.
We can certainly arrange that and make sure that y'all have that ahead of time.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. That's all we have on the public input period. Under old business, we had the discussion of the health insurance retirement classes. I think that is, see if we've got an attachment on that one. Yeah. That would be 6A, attachment 6A. So would you want to explain what that actually does?
Um, probably not. I didn't put that on, so I'm not sure. I'm not the best person to speak to it.
I prepared it, you know.
Yeah, please did. I didn't say it didn't have a name on here, so I wanted to share it.
I prepared this as a request of the council from last meeting. What it does is just a resolution to make the staff simply to notify the insurance company of classes of insured in addition to regular employees. They're already defined as insured, so this would just add three different groups of people. Number one is those that open windows we've talked about in the past, that occurred in 2001. Those people are already on it, we just never officially notified the insurance company. I'd like to, number two is the one you talked about at the last meeting, that my understanding was, and I prepared it under what's been called the Rule of 80, which is if they're aged and years of service with the city total of 80 or more, they qualify, and their spouses, so long as they pay the insurance and until they meet the requirement for Medicare. I also put in that it applies retroactively to any employee who met those conditions at the time of retirement. And then the third one is elected officials.
Any questions on that?
I have a question. Would you discuss whether they would pay it to the city or to the insurance company? Was that determined? Would you say they did it?
I left it out of the resolution intentionally, just in case it changed or we didn't want to. So whatever the arrangement would be.
Now, what that would be at this point?
This would be going to two weeks.
Right. Yeah. Yes, sir.
The only thing I just want to be clear on is this, this Rule of 80 is a new policy that we're introducing for employees. Currently, what's the policy for retirement of current employees? Without the Rule of 80, at age 65, they can retire? Or I'm not...
I think, go ahead. I think, Mr. Rush, you can actually retire at 55 at a discounted pension if you invest it. Of course, if somebody had five years of service at age 55, and it was discounted to 2% or 3% per year, it would be some minimal amount.
And full pension is available at what age?
Full is at 65, if I'm not mistaken.
Regardless of years of service?
Subject to testing, yes, sir.
Yep. So then if someone had five years of service, that would be vesting, and they were 65, they could retire at age 70. I mean, the Rule of 80 would be 70 in that case, is what I'm saying.
They wouldn't qualify.
They wouldn't qualify, okay.
And they're going to settle at 70.
So this will, though, add to the retirement benefit cost for the city, but we don't know how much. And we don't know how far down the road and how much it's going to cost down the road. But it's, in a sense, it's a new benefit for the employees.
And my understanding from discussions is that the only additional cost would be as those people drive up the cost for employees because the pool's expanded with older...
Correct. And as the retirement age advances from 65 to 67, the costs will continue to go up.
Let me ask a question. Now, you bring up a good point there, that if you are 65 and you have five years service, okay, you've got to wait, when can you start drawing your retirement?
When we retire at 65.
You don't have to be, it don't have to be 80 years, it don't have to be a total age.
No, this doesn't have anything to do with the pension. This is only relative to qualifying for health insurance.
Okay.
The thing, the thing that I...
So what's that got to do? So anybody that retires can do that? I mean, so in other words, if I, if somebody retires after, and they're qualified to quote retire, I guess, so it's nothing to do with the qualifications for a pension, correct?
Correct.
Other than that would define who's retired. You'd have to qualify for retirement because you have to be a retired employee, so you would have to invest it. But that's, so once you invest, this is a potential, calling it a benefit, I mean, it's making the insurance available, they're paying for it. So I guess 55 is the minimum retirement age. This would be allowed to anybody who's 55 with 25 years of service. They have 24 years of service, they don't get it.
They could continue on the benefit plan until they turn 65 or 67, and as long as they continue to pay the insurance.
That's the point number one. Nice sentence.
I understood this would apply to spouses as well?
Yes. That's the way I prepared it, because that's my understanding.
So if someone's spouse, and I'm not being funny with this, because I think we may have a case or two the way this applies, if someone's spouse is 15 or 20 years younger, then that spouse could be on there until that, what were we, 85 or something?
That's the prepared, yes. As long as they pay their own premium.
Anything else? Okay. Move that on to the next meeting. Discussion of water and sewer rates. Put that on, Bob. Who put that on?
I think we've been discussing water and sewer rates, and I think we've been talking about a rate increase in order to pay some debts in September. And I think Mr. Wood is more familiar with it, but, you know, and so we know we need, we've been talking to Cherokee about consolidating the water systems, but that's something that if it were to happen, is not going to happen in the immediate future. So we have to plan to pay our debts, so we have to raise the water and sewer rates. And Mr. Wood has, I guess he knows with Mr. Price, that they know how much money we need and how we're going to get it, but we need a certain amount for the water and sewer rates. And my suggestion would be that by the next meeting where we would take action on this rate increase, that Mr. Wood present to the council a rate structure that will provide the funds that they need by September to pay our debts.
I believe that information is available now, as far as, you know, the structure that they're looking at. So I think this being a work session, perhaps we'll have to discuss, is that what they have put together? Do we, I don't think we have it in our package per se, but I think it's available, is it not, Mr. Wood?
Well, yes. There is a rate structure that has been calculated that was, that would be a common increase if we wanted to give consideration, I'm not trying to complicate things, but it is complicated. If we wanted to give consideration to the establishment of a greater rate differential for sewage treatment, which to me seems logical, given the fact that it is a sewer plant, consent order requirements that have created, or at least contributed to, not entirely created, because again, without getting too complicated, we've got a million and a half dollars in bond payment for the reservoir that we've got to meet this year. So, but aside from that, much of what is driving our rate increase necessity is sewer sewage treatment cost. If you wanted to establish a rate differential, I don't have that calculation. If you wanted to go with a largely common, for lack of a better term, across-the-board increase, we couldn't give you those numbers. Depends on whether, you may or may not like me to use the term philosophy, but it depends on which philosophy you want to apply. If you want to go simplistically across the board, we can give you that. If you want to look at some reasoned differential because of the increased cost in sewage, then we can give you those numbers tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
First thing I want to say is I'm not blind to the fact that we need to have an increase. Secondly, the numbers we're looking at, and I want to tell you, the committee that was appointed to look at the water and sewer and all the other options has been working very hard to try to come up with a way of not having to have an increase. Bottom line is, we've got to have an increase, and we need to have it June 1st. We acted on it in two weeks, we're going to make a decision. What the council needs to do is to say, is that rate going to be? The numbers are out there, we've got to have it, and there's no reason to dodge the question. We've got to move ahead on it. That would give us some breathing room to do the additional options that we're currently working with, and we just need to get, step on out of the way, get that so we're not going to be obligated to a point beyond return at the end of our fiscal year. And let's get it, and let's move on it. We played around with it long enough.
Mr. Price, you have something?
Well, actually, Mr. Beresford just said basically what I was going to say, and I want to add that that increase is going to need to be in the ballpark at 20% to 23%. If we don't want to borrow from, if we want to avoid borrowing from the general fund, then that rate's going to need to be at the 20% to 23% ballpark. Of course, it's a little murky because we don't know how many more breaks and penalties and fines and emergencies we're going to have, but we just as well prepare ourselves, just as I'm talking about, just a stopgap measure to keep it unattended above water, our heads above water. That's what it's going to take.
Let me point out that what we need to think perhaps in terms of is the total dollars that the system needs to continue to operate. And that number is going to be by September 1st, about $2 million that are currently in budgeted now. Roughly plus or minus a million and a half of that is to meet the bond payment this year at that time, and the other half million dollars is because of the other improvements that have been discussed previously. But to get that, get to that $2 million number, if we look at a total of about a half million dollars during the balance of this fiscal year, being derived from rate increases, if we can achieve about a half million dollars in water and sewer reserve monies, unassigned fund balance monies, and that would largely deplete that fund balance. But if we could achieve that, that leaves us in about a million dollars that we'd have to look at from some alternate sources. That latter question doesn't have to be resolved tonight. As long as that's resolved in time, to give us that billion and a half dollars by September 1st, then that's okay. But in order to achieve a $500,000 benefit during the balance of this fiscal year, which as of June 1, would only be one-third of the fiscal year remaining, Mr. Beresford's right, we need that, we need the action at the next meeting. But I would encourage you to think in terms of the total number of dollars that we need to achieve.
Yes, sir.
One other key point is when we throw out 20%, 30%, 25% or 23%, those are like big numbers, like wow, 20%. When we look at it and say what dollar figure it is, every dollar that the entity has to spend on any additional outcome out of their own personal account, we are aware of it as critical, but we also realize that we're talking some dollars. We aren't talking 20s and 30s. The 20 percenters, I just hate to use percentages. I'd really use dollars, and that's what we want to be able to come to and say, here's what it is. Here's what it's now, here's what it's going to be, and that's what we got to have. And that's based on everything Mr. Wood just said, and all the background that we've been through for the past...
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add on this. We have, I'll make a current experience for you, Mr. Brown. We have millions of dollars, and it's time to send the call back to them. We've talked about these figures, we've thrown these figures around, we've had recommendations from individuals that we hired to do rates to support us. They've given us figures. We discussed it for the past two months or more of this same issue, and Mr. Brown gave us an excellent presentation at our last meeting about the need for this rate increase, and unfortunately, we didn't take action on it then. I think that Mr. Wood and Mr. Price can look at the figures, and if you could, please, wrap it, get it together, get it to us with a recommendation as to what you all see that is going to be able to get us over the hump for this fiscal year, and what we need to be looking at for the next year, and the next year, and the next year, as far as minimum increases go. Get that to us prior to our next meeting so that we can take action on this matter and put it to rest, because we all realize that we're going to have to do a rate increase. Nobody wants to, but we're going to have to.
Mr. Rush?
I did know.
Okay. Any, anything else? I would like to say that our meetings, I think, have been, our meeting with the Water and Sewer Authority, I think, was reasonably productive. We got a few questions answered that we didn't have. Ball is in our part. I mean, they have made, what they may not call it a proposal, but basically they have laid out an outline of a way that there could be a tripartite effort between Cobb, Marietta, the Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority, and the City of Canton. And that process, I think most of you are aware of what the proposal was. And it is very, very inviting on the surface, but we do have to analyze those financials as far as we're concerned to see if it's going to work for us. It has to work for all three members of that group there, I mean, all three agencies. It has to work for everybody, has to be at least some in for each one for this to work. And they've put it in our ballpark now. We know reasonably what to expect. I think there was a little bit of flexibility on what they would charge for a sewer rate. My guess is that flexibility is there. I think the water, $2.25 million on the water that they would charge is firm, because, you know, that's what we charge Waluska, that's what they charge Cobb, they charge Woodstock, they charge Waluska at that rate, and so that's pretty firm. It would, the proposal that they had would have relieved us of the, all the debt on the reservoir while maintaining in reserve a 6 million gallons per day of capacity in that reservoir, being held by the Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority, with the Cobb County gaining 5.5 of our 11.5 capacity. The Water and Sewer Authority would, once again, they would assume operation and ownership of the wastewater treatment plant, the water and sewer plant, and we would, they would pay the wholesale water to us. This, not only would it, it would free up $600,000 a year of sales tax that we're now paying in debt service. So there are some, a pretty good situation, looks very favorable on the surface, but yet, when you put the numbers to it, we're not, you know, it doesn't have to look all that favorable at this point, but we're continuing to do that. If you plug in Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority rates only to our current operation, in other words, if we changed our water and sewer rates to what Cherokee County Water and Sewer rates are, we would gain $500,000 roughly a year. That's the proposal. I mean, that's a fact. And I think ultimately, we may end up doing something like that. That certainly alone would not get us what we need for the reservoir debt service. But anyway, just to let you know that we haven't given up on that, that's still being considered and analyzed at this time, but the ball is in our part, we've got to do in our part, we've got to do the numbers. If the numbers don't work, we need to get back to them and say, thanks, but no thanks, we appreciate your time, we can't do anything, we're just going to have to raise the rates higher, residents are going to have a really tough time paying some of them. But, uh, we'll have to look at any other alternatives as well by reducing the scope of what was included in that study that we had. But, uh, that's what, that's what we're going to have to do, and we'll continue to work that. The bottom line is, we really can't allow the weeks to get way beyond other jurisdictions. Just, I mean, that's just not going to work, we're going to have to do something else. We're doing something wrong if we can't take that, uh, wholesale water rate and sewer rate and make it work some way. We're doing something wrong there about the operation. I don't know what it is, there's some costs there involved that others are not having and are unable to make it, and the others don't have the reservoir, I understand. But if we, if we can't make it without that reservoir, with the reservoir being done to, to, uh, water, a water plant, a sewer plant being done and freeing up $600,000 worth of sales tax money, then we're doing something not right, and we need, we need to figure out what it is and take a look at it. Um, but I agree, we, we don't have a choice, we're going to have to raise the rates to some extent at this point. I do feel, however, that we do need to think in terms of, of which rates we raise and how we do that, because the sewer is the problem right now, basically, as far as what we need to, uh, get into in order to, uh, resolve our consent order and so forth, so, it's the one that needs work, works, so. And if we want to wait any of that on there, that's one thing, if we just want, if it doesn't matter where it comes from, then we can do that either way.
All right, let's go on. T D Manager's report?
Okay, breeze through mine, I hope a little bit more speedily. Um, election and general government agreement, uh, I think you can read my briefing letter, the background there. Uh, our clerk served as our elections officer, she can answer any questions you might have. I, I tried to point out that that is basically the same, uh, agreement as we've had in prior years, but we will ask for your endorsement of that agreement, uh, at the next meeting. With respect to some discussion about the election precincts, let me take two minutes and explain that. Uh, this is an unusual election year, we have state elections, and, uh, city elections normally are held during off years to state and county and federal elections. Uh, this year, the Board of Education has decided to schedule their SFOSS referendum concurrent with the city elections. Uh, there's a possibility that there might also, uh, we're told today, I think by Mr. Rush, there's a possibility that the, that the county alcohol question might also be upheld at that time. But anyway, there's a county election and a city election. Um, the city is one precinct, with one precinct station, one polling station, which is City Hall, uh, for city election purposes. However, some city residents, uh, their respective county precinct is City Hall, some city residents, I'm one, um, their county precinct is elsewhere. It happens to be at the first Baptist Church, as an example. So if I vote on Election Day, on Election Day, in both of those elections, I've got to go to my two respective polling stations to cast those two votes. My city vote here at City Hall, my county votes, uh, at, at my county polling station. During the twenty-one days of early voting, uh, a voter can go to one location, uh, which is the Board of Elections Office on Main Street, and cast votes in both of those elections during those twenty-one days of early voting. On Election Day specifically and exclusively, uh, someone would have to, under the current scenario, have to go to both of their polling stations, may have to, excuse me, I won't say will have to, may have to, I would be the one who would have to, those for whom this is the county voting precinct station could not. Uh, I know this is confusing, but it's the way it is, to, to, the only alternative to that would be to, uh, to, to, uh, allow people to vote at their county on Election Day, at their county precinct station for city elections. However, to achieve that, you would have to issue precinct cards, I'm told the cost of that would be about $6,000, and, and we would also necessarily have to have, uh, U.S. Justice Department approve to re-allocate or reassign those, those voting precincts. So, um, that's probably not, not the best alternative, because if we have a runoff in the city elections, then you've got to reverse all that. So, probably the best, uh, alternative and our recommendation would be that we stick with the scenario as it is and encourage our friends in the media and everybody else to be sure that people understand that it will be much more convenient to vote early, they can vote in one location, or if they wait until election day, they'll have to vote in two different places. You don't have to take any action on that unless you want to reverse or change the scenario that we've got.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Mr. Stan. I'll be right back.
Uh, I was just, uh, is there anything that prohibits us from posting notifications or instructions at our precinct here at City Hall, uh, again, to inform our citizens that if you want to vote on the matter with the Board of Education, or that you would need to go to your county precinct? Just to reaffirm that with?
Yeah, Ms. Tanner, I'm not sure, as you well know, laws about signage at precinct stations and polling stations can be very restrictive. I don't know the answer to that, we could certainly look into that and get, get that back to you. I, I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you.
Mr. Rush?
Yes, sir. There, there is one other alternative, that, that someone could take an absentee ballot for the other elections and vote in one polling place and send an absentee ballot on the other. So that, that is another option, I just thought I'd mention it.
Okay. All right, um, I'm asking for action on our surplus auction items list, and requesting action tonight on that, please. I had to add, do you have a chance? Anyone have any questions or anything with that?
It's Saturday the fourteenth, what are the hours for that?
I don't know, I, I'm not sure, we get, get that, get it back to you, I, I don't know, I, I want to say nine o'clock again, but I'm, but I'm not sure. It's not, we're not conducting, it's being conducted by...
There's a big side over going on, going to Harmon Field, I saw it there, and I can't remember what time it actually said, but if you go down Highway Five near your, near, on your way home, you might look the same.
It's being, it's being conducted by Jeff Dobson, he's working with, uh, Board of Education, with Cherokee County Sheriff's Department, and maybe one or two other entities, governing entities, I'm not sure.
We'll have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, those are favor, signature, five, saying aye, opposed, no, all we were spoke to propose.
Thank you. Uh, you will recall that Race Track acquired property from the city at forty-one twenty-five Marietta Highway, uh, and in doing so, they agreed to request annexation into the city of Canton. Race Track has requested a city zoning designation of C two for the property. Uh, the Canton Painting Commission has voted unanimously to recommend the C two designation of the property, so we would be asking you to take action to accept the annexation of the property and also to approve the city zoning designation.
This would be considered, and that would be considered, for freedom?
Yes, sir. All right, um, Hickory Flat Road and Willuska Streets, streetscape and sidewalk projects, and I'm mentioning to you, um, we are scheduled to bid on May sixteenth for those projects. We are advertising the Cherokee Tribune as a legal organ, uh, on GMA website, on the City of Canton website, when it's the Dodge and Raw Hill Plan Room, I think it goes by some other name now, but those of us who are approaching senior citizens staff, remember it's, it's Dodge and Raw Hill. And then our consulting engineers are, uh, are directly contacting, uh, contractors on those projects, but I want you to be aware of the schedule on that. Um, landfill, you will recall, uh, all of you who were here at our planning session of, a couple of weeks ago on Saturday, that we do have methane gas under our, uh, old landfill, and I would want to say closed, it's functionally closed, but it's not been certifiably closed. At the Public Works Department, we have methane gas, uh, that's actually under one of our buildings there, EPD's aware of it, it's not considered to be a, a matter of profoundly imminent danger, but it is such that, uh, they're looking at it closely, they're going to require, could require some groundwater monitoring, but we're going to have to continue that closure process, hoping to achieve full and final closure. Uh, I think for the past couple of years, bringing us to this point, we've been utilizing an engineering firm, Stantec, which is the old Tribble and Richardson firm, if you're familiar with that engineering firm. Uh, the next phase of work, Mayor Hobgood and I met with, uh, three representatives of the EPD, and, uh, I think two representatives from Stantec, some of our staff, Mr. Ken Jimmy, uh, about a month or so ago. The next chapter in this process is probably going to be about a seventy or seventy-five thousand dollar, uh, investment on the, on the part of the city. The basic direction I need from council is whether or not you want to continue, of course, with Stantec. Uh, Mr. Ken Jimmy, his observation has been that they have represented the city well thus far. Uh, I think the mayor or I either don't have that correct, uh, history there that have anything about that. But, um, the question is, do you want to try to get that to work out with other engineering firm, or do you want to try to capitalize on the history that Stantec has, has already achieved with us and stayed, of course, with them?
Mr. Beresford?
We have already paid Stantec for their work, or their survey, or their service.
Yes, sir, I'm thinking, Mr. Beresford, somewhere in the thirty thousand dollar range, I'm thinking.
Kind of hard to walk away from the thirty and bring in somebody to charge us thirty again to go...
Is that a close number, Mr. Ken Jimmy?
Yes. Well, they, uh, appear to have done a good job, just from my limited experience there. I, I, I think we probably need to stick with them and get moving on this, because we don't have, I, I think time is critical as well on this, because we don't know where all that gas is going underground there, and we need, we need to find out, and we need to rectify that situation.
Just one side note, is there any way we can drill a hole through that building, tap into that, and that thing, and use it for the heating out there for Victor Kenji? But that's just, oh, by the way, that was a little negative to us.
Very little.
Any other comments about that? I mean, so...
I would just remind, we, we will proceed, I would remind the council that that would necessitate budget amendment, that is not a budgeted item. Uh, I think the first thirty or so was, but the, this second chapter is not budgeted, so that will necessitate a general fund budget amendment. And, uh, other than financials, which are submitted for your consideration and would be led to, answer questions, uh, during the week, if that would be preferable to council on any financial issue that you've got.
No, I, I believe it, we don't need to take that to...
No, 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 she's saying it's going to be on the next agenda, and we can put it on the agenda, just authorizing us to contract with them to consider, of course.
Yeah, I'll, on the, I'll ask, I have a couple of questions.
If we look at, uh, first, just the general fund, and we're at eighty-two and a half percent on revenues and forty-four point six percent on expenditures. While we may not be able to do that exactly, but if you extend those out, you know, we're six months into the year. If you extended those out and said we were going to make a hundred percent on those revenues, and we were going to make, uh, another six months, which would be at eighty-eight or eighty-nine percent on the expenditures, that in and of itself, if that were the case, would free up about twelve percent of the nine million dollars that is actually ten million dollars that is projected there under the expenditures. So it would appear to me that there, there could be as much as seven, eight hundred thousand dollars of money left over in that budget, if we continue on the same line that we are now as far as utilization, uh, of our budget. Now, also, if you look at, uh, the Water and Sewer Fund budget, you got a similar situation there as well. And I don't, we're considering as part of our revenues, some of those monies there, like we're also at about eighty-eight, eighty-nine percent, uh, for six months, or if you extend it out for six, for the balance of the year, you'd end up with about, uh, you know, another eleven or twelve percent less expenditures than you forecast here. Which will free up another, uh, about, about two and a half million dollars, something like that. Um, it's, you know, it's something I think we need to think about when we think about raising these rates, so, you know, pretty, pretty high, is that if we follow our budgetary, if we can project based on the six months we've already used, we're going to have a little money left over here, and, uh, maybe not necessarily need to raise them as much as it might look like on the surface, unless you are considering those items. Uh, the next, next item under the stormwater fund, I think, is, uh, is somewhat revealing, and when you, when you really look at that, our average, uh, stormwater money coming in is about eighty-five thousand dollars a month, which is a little over a million dollars a year in, in, in cash coming into the city for the stormwater. We have, uh, at, at the end of, um, six months, we've, we've gotten fifty-six point six five, almost fifty-seven percent, which is seven percent above what we had projected in revenues, but we've only spent twenty-nine point eight three percent of those funds. Now, the question is, how much, I know there's a lot more of that out there probably to spend, obviously, but we very likely could end up with some leftover money in the, uh, stormwater fund. And I think the question has been brought up as to, could that kind of money be used for reservoir debt service? There's not a better stabilization pond than that thing as preventing erosion downstream, let me tell you. Prevent a lot of, that's probably far-fetched, but, you know, if you think about it, some of these things are pretty far-fetched, too. Uh, now, I think I understand on the road and sidewalk fund, why we're only at three point nine percent of the revenues and ten point one nine percent of the expenditures. I guess that's because of the grants that should be coming out of that streetscape project come soon. Hotel motel tax, when you look at, when you look at that, uh, we're doing, doing quite well in that, better than, basically, we had anticipated, it looks like, uh, we're, we are about, uh, a hundred, we're about seventy-six percent of the revenue that we had projected after six months. We're si, we're sixteen percent above what we had projected on the hotel motel tax. And we could finish there well above in revenues, above our expenditures, yet we're only at thirty-seven point seven five percent of expenditures. Now, don't get me wrong, I like to see those expenditures way below those revenues, but what I'm saying, when you, when you're projecting charging people more for things, you need to kind of look, is there other, is there other little piles you could scrape up and make a bigger pile of different sources up there? And we need to make sure, I think, that we, that we do that, and hopefully that, that we are.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to, we're on that subject.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask Scott, at the next meeting, you heard what the mayor said, we all heard what the mayor said, I'd like you to either, either tell us why he might be wrong, or tell us why he might be right, because it sounds right to me.
Well, let me tell you two things. First of all, you always... First of all, you always, and we did this, Scott Price and I sat in this room last year and did this, we told you we were budgeting conservatively, and I always want to do that. Secondly, I sat in this room yesterday with every department head around a square of tables back there over pizza and complimented them on their frugality, on their prudence. I expect I can cite you some things we've not done this year that we need to do this year, but I'm encouraging them to be frugal. And I didn't know these questions or comments were going to come tonight, but sure, we'll be glad to speak to them if I can get some prior notice, nobody likes to, has been noted to be blindsided, but we'll be glad to speak to every one of those at the next meeting if you want us to.
Good. I honestly didn't expect you to be able to answer those tonight, maybe we should, but I didn't anticipate that necessarily.
Just a point, last year, just prior to budget, and I think it was probably around July, started looking at these percentages, and if we held for those next couple of months, obviously in September, we were going to come in with the surplus, which we did. So the percentages are conservative, but also the same thing, looking at this, there is something that we can pull together as some numbers, maybe gives us a little bit of comfort level because your town is doing a great job, and I think that's so far as shown here. So if we just expand that out a little bit, that should give us some comfort, but by no means should we just go and say we're home safe, we can't, because you just pointed seventy-five thousand dollars, that's not in the program, it's got to be put in there, that stuff is going to pop up, so. I think these numbers look encouraging, and that's what we want to continue with.
I'm not sure if, to expand on what Mr. Barry Schwartz is saying, I'm not sure Mr. Brian, and I don't know the answer to this, because again, wasn't prepared to address it, I'm not sure where we are on track this year versus where we finished last year, but the goal is to finish with more than we spent, and we're meeting that goal, and I hope we always will.
But if, if we're going to do really, you know, if we're really going to utilize budget, it wouldn't be that much more, we shouldn't try to generate a lot more revenue from, take a lot more revenue from our citizens than we're actually going to spend that year.
And we don't have, we don't have that history in this city of doing that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I do commend the staff as well for being conservative in the expenditures, because that's, that's what it's going to take.
I want to add one final comment, if we do raise rates, and finally we didn't need to after all, you bet I'm going to fight tooth and nail to give that money back. Good.
Okay. Next up.
No, I'm through.
Oh, you do, okay. Let's see here, okay. Council introduced items, discussion proposed additions to alcohol ordinance, Mr. Rush?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Give us the executive summary of what the changes were.
First, I would like to thank, several months ago, we formed a committee to look at the alcohol ordinance, and the goal was to bring the ordinance into conformity with the judicial reality and to find the ordinance to assist both law enforcement and our local establishments. And I want to thank Police Chief Jeff Lance, City Solicitor Benson Chambers, Attorney David Walker, and restaurateurs Mike Johnson and Adam Kay for all their work. And what we basically have tried to do is to introduce mandatory training for employees as well as the manager on duty. The manager on duty wasn't there before, I mean, as far as the training, and the logic here was to increase the vigilance of the establishment by making the on-duty manager culpable concerning violations. And along the way, by a combined effort, both the police department and the merchants revised our mandatory training program to their mutual satisfaction. And also in this section, it outlines penalties for violation, more in tune with the current judicial policy. And some of the other changes that are just slight, one is we modified the distance requirement measurement from, if a crow flies, which is kind of hard to attach a measurement to a crow, to the horizontal linear feet along established thoroughfares. So the distance of three hundred feet is now measured along the thoroughfare as opposed to straight line through the air. And another item that we did is we revised the food to alcohol ratio from sixty forty to fifty fifty, which is in line with, I understand, state laws and our neighboring communities. And it also changes the verification period from monthly to quarterly, because it was determined that monthly was a little too hard to measure and be justified. And I might add that, I was at the City of Woodstock's council meeting this past week, and they're in the process of making the same revisions to fifty fifty. And they, their only verification for the food to alcohol ratio is once a year, the establishment just has to say that they did, have an affidavit that they did it. Those are, and the rest of the changes that are in there, just some slight wording changes just to make it clear. And I'm sure that the, Mr. Dyer has seen the ordinance, and so has Judge Roach, and Mr. Dyer brought up something this evening that we need to take a look at, and we'll probably have, we'll talk about that possibly at the next meeting. That's, that's all I have on this item.
I'm sorry, Jack, go ahead.
Do we have any one due inspe?
At the city managers.
Multiple reports. I expect, do we send somebody out? No. No. We've had this going for what?
The auditing and inspections, that's been, it's been around for years.
I think since we increased the hours.
Oh, the, the hours have been increased since last February.
Over a year, we still haven't done that?
Well, no, we're getting multiple reports.
Correct.
It's just we haven't done any, we haven't done any auditing on it, I don't, well, maybe we did, I don't know if we did or not.
We're getting multiple reports from the retail, from the businesses.
Yeah. We, we, and some, that's what I meant, we are, and some cities have to require an affidavit, an affidavit.
That's Woodstock, it's just the annual affidavit, that's what they said.
And just a second, the fifty percent that you're talking about, is that food sales?
Fifty food, fifty alcohol. We're currently sixty forty, food, sixty for food, forty for alcohol, and the neighboring communities are fifty fifty, so they're just streamlined, same as everybody else.
It's, we don't know if there's businesses now that are not meeting our current guidelines that would fall.
Well, they're submitting the monthly reports, I'm not, I haven't looked at them, I don't know who's looked at them, but I presume somebody asked, but that's, that's all I know.
Yeah, I have a question, not in anticipation of this, but just generally asked about that a month or so ago, and I haven't seen them, but I was assured they were coming in. See Lance, as vigorous as he is, he's had in the affirmative that they are, so.
In what format are these reports? Are these certified from their accounting, or are they just a statement from them?
Yeah, Scott, they come through a listener that gives that, basically gives the information to me, basically shows the proceedings of alcohol, so.
But no, they're not certified by CPA or something like that, they just don't.
We're just taking their word for it, really, right?
And we have found that, basically, they've been truthful with us, we've had a couple of occasions where there was a small proceedings of alcohol not within that forty percent, and we basically went and warned them. And so they, so far, they have been truthful with us, what reports I have seen.
I think that they report their sales on the sales tax return, which they're reporting to the state.
I think.
And then alcohol sales are run separately, so that total is an easily known number. So you have a lot of comfort in what they're reporting to, one is a state or state act to turn, and the other is their register actually records alcohol sales separately.
Yes. But the, but the problem, the problem with that wording in there, in our ordinance now, we kind of refreshed it a little bit, make it a little bit more understandable, because one, it said monthly, then at one point it said at the end of the year, so it didn't, the ordinance itself, it did not comprehend what each other, so that's what we did in that ordinance, the new ordinance now with the quarterly, it basically tells you when you got to do it and how you got to do it, and that's to be approved for Scott and for us.
Yeah, I worry slightly with the oxygen.
So with the fifty fifty now, we should see increase in revenues, is that right?
I wouldn't, I really don't know.
Well, it's forty fifty, and now we're going to fifty fifty, so it should be.
Well, changing our ordinance is not going to change their sales, I mean.
It definitely will change the reporting of the sales.
It'll change their reporting, but it may, you know, the reporting will still be the same, I would guess, I don't know, I mean, but I can't say that by changing its fifty fifty would increase revenues. We may and we may not.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have something?
The changes that you're proposing here are in line with our sister cities and with state law?
Correct.
Tell me once again how the measurement would have been from between, say, sale of alcohol and a school, for instance.
The current ordinance says the distance from the seller of alcohol to the school or church is three hundred and fifty feet as the crow flies, and what was changed is to measurement of linear feet along established thoroughfares. So instead of flying over the houses, you got to walk around the corner, because no one's going to fly there.
Okay, there was brought up, a couple of weeks back, when we were looking at the church that wanted to use the second floor, and we had the pizza parlor sitting in the parking lot, and we were kind of drawing the line from the pizza parlor straight over to the building, and.
How would you, how would you draw it in that case?
Well, in that case, it probably would be a straight line because it's a parking lot and you walk straight across it.
Well, but if you drew it straight at it, but.
Okay. But because that, so state law doesn't tell you how to measure it, it says it's three hundred and fifty feet.
I'm not sure about.
It doesn't require us to do it the same way, but state law has its own way of measuring because the distance requirements are state law anyway, so we can, but I think it is door to door, I don't think it is as the crow flies, I'd have to check on that, but I don't think it's a straight line anymore. I think it is door to door, and you come out the door, you walk down the side, walk through the door of other buildings.
He's correct on that, it's door to door.
Is this, Mr. Mayor, is this something that's going to be coming forward for action? I know you said that Mr. Dyer looked at it and.
I think this will have to go before the committee to council.
They have an ordinance, sorry.
Two readings, yeah.
I guess what I'm asking is when, when are you proposing for it to come before council or are you looking at it two weeks, so it would be?
I'm not considering this at first reading because this is just a new.
No, not this, I'm looking at, I know you said there's some other change that you were considering.
Probably would be the first reading, would be the first work session in June, would be the, there's no hurry on this.
Anyone else? Okay, Sunday alcohol sales, Mr. Rush?
I'm running the alcohol bit today. The only reason I put this on is, Woodstock is going to put down their election, next election in November, and the county is probably going to do it, most of the communities in the area are going to do it, so we may as well put it on and let the voters vote on it, whether we're for it or against it is immaterial, but the voters should at least be able to decide, and if we don't do it this time, we're going to have to do a special election and wait for two years. And if neighboring communities adopt it, as far as we don't, then I'm reaching, it's going to be a disadvantage. So I'm suggesting that we ask Mr. Dyer to put something together for action at the next meeting.
Well, I don't oppose that, I think anytime you give a citizen's opportunity to make a decision, there's certainly nothing wrong with that, although I do think there might be an election next year in the county that this could have been added on, just, which probably going to be a reasonable sales tax or transportation, I think that's coming up next year. So it would be that, however, no, I don't have one.
If you waited later with a county election, you'd have the issue of this issue having to be done separately at city hall, you'd have the same problem.
So you had to have, Mr. Mayor, or you had to have the place of the attorney to prepare?
Yes.
Yes. No, it'd just be a resolution, but it's premature now, you don't have to do it until June, July, but the resolution would just be to direct the clerk, as elected supervisor did call or bring.
All right. Next up, request the mayor to board a committee to remove.
Reserves.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Now, we talked about the city having a reserve fund, and the city has not had a dedicated reserve for several years. We've got an unbudgeted system of funds, and I think Mr. Tanner brought up quite a while back that GMA suggests the city size of Canton should have a dedicated reserve of one point seven million, and we currently have, have nothing set aside as a dedicated reserve. We've got unbudgeted funds, but nothing is set aside as a dedicated money in the bank rainy day fund. And at our recent planning session, we all agreed that a reserve fund is one of our short-term goals, and so I'm just suggesting that we allocate, say, three hundred thousand of our unbudgeted funds as a dedicated reserve, and we do it this year. I'm asking for council's opinion.
I, you know I'm all for this reserve fund, but I guess where I'm concerned is that we, do we, or can we afford to do, look at allocating that much into the reserve fund during this initial timeframe? I'm considering that maybe we may to look at if we have the funds available for, maybe cushion maybe a hundred thousand versus three hundred thousand, that's just my ball in the game. I'm all in favor of reserve fund, but I'm not so sure I'm in favor of starting out with that bit of a dip right now out of, since we are on a very tight budget.
I'm, maybe I don't understand, I don't know what difference it would make actually if you put a million in there, for instance, I mean, you're still going to be able to access the money, aren't you? I mean, if you need it. Well, I don't know whether it's, you've just got to be able to access it, it's just the fact to me that it's in a separate account, and, you know, it's very visible what's there, and then as it comes out, you can see what has reduced.
I think the savings account is very important, the reserve fund is one point seven, there's no way for us to jump to one point seven, I think the three hundred thousand would be a good start, if that's put into our two thousand and twelve budget, as that designated number and is planned, we should be able to live with it. I think the key thing is if it turns out that we blow through our contingency fund, which I think we already have, and we got to dip into the unassigned fund, which we're headed toward, we better have a good reason why we need to dip into the reserve fund. Reserve funds, it's got to be a major issue. So I think the reserve fund is right on, it needs to be planned for in the two thousand and twelve budget, and that's something that we'd ask our city manager to program into the program, the three hundred thousand or two fifty or whatever it might be, but we need to have that set up.
So we would just be adding on top of our reserve.
Well, for example.
Balance. Our funded reserve balance, we would, we'd still have that, right?
Well, for example, we didn't know what we were going to have in the unassigned fund balance until the end of the year, it turned out it was one point seven million, but if we had it budgeted, that, we wouldn't have had one point seven, we'd have had one point four, because that had gone right into that reserve fund, and it pans off. That's where I look at it, so.
All right, anything else?
I think we're talking. I think we're talking different routes here. The contingency fund that we're speaking of is what we're using, we're drawing on for some of our debt services that are coming unexpected. And I think Mr. Wood, you indicated that that one point four, one point seven is really not gonna be there at the end of the fiscal year. Did I not hear that correctly?
No, ma'am, I hope the majority of it would be there.
In the unassigned fund balance?
Yes, ma'am. Maybe even more. We don't know yet what that number will be. That number actually changes every day as money's collected and as money is expended. The one point three, four, seven number, I think our auditor cited it at one point seven was simply where we were on that day of September thirtieth, two thousand ten. We budgeted six hundred thousand dollars for contingency money, for totally unexpected items, and we have exhausted that six hundred thousand dollars. And we've now begun to spend monies that were not budgeted and the source of those monies would be that unassigned fund balance.
Okay, so the non-budget items is coming from that. Based on projected expenditures or what you are foreseeing, how much of that fund balance do you see us eating into? Do you have any idea at this time?
I could tell you, but I don't recall. It's, I don't even remember what those items were prior from the last two or three meetings.
Mr. Mayor. I was, no, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, sure. I was inquiring earlier today with Mr. Price about the contingency fund because I was looking under the general fund and I didn't see a heading for contingency fund. Reason being, it's gone to zero. It's gone. So I did not get direction, please, but can I suggest that at our next meeting, he will have a listing of contingency fund and it'll show where those monies of the six hundred thousand went. I know a hundred thousand is for the sanctuary, which was brought forward, so there's five hundred thousand gone. After that point, we know where that's money's to spend, then what we're looking at is the one point seven and we'll be chipping away at it and hopefully very small chunks of that. So we can't really get that. Seventy-five thousand just popped up, so we know that's gonna be.
Yes. The issue is whether or not we're gonna establish a reserve fund, not contingency fund and not unbudgeted. I just am restrained.
But we need all three of those.
Well, I think, you know, I mean, I personally, my wife and I have a savings account and we put money in the same account and we don't go there. It's like SkyMiles, you know, you build them up until you really need it. But I think that's what the city should be doing, is putting money away for a rainy day because we have these unexpected events happening all the time. If we're in such a tight budget, we should, we should at least have some money in the bank. As far as I'm concerned, as a city, we're gonna take check to paycheck and I don't think that's a good policy.
Do you think that a contingency is something that you go to quickly? I mean, is the level of which you reach into it, is that what you're saying?
The contingency is funds that you set aside because you know you're gonna have unexpected expenditures. The reserve fund is something you set aside for catastrophes.
Mr. Mayor. Hold on. We have a contingency fund and we have an unsigned fund right now. There is no action needed by the council other than accepting amended budget. If it's needed, Mr. Wood and his departments say, we need this money, and they go and get it. Now, what the reserve fund would be is council to have okay dipping into that fund. And that's what I would see it as. So what we're doing is saying, you gotta run the business, he's managing the business, and that's where he needs to get some money. But putting it into the reserve moves it into another level where we then have to agree on, is it that emergency or not?
Can I, can I? No, the thing you said, I agree with. Think of the contingency this way. Think of it as a department. It's a department with no people. Just like everything, just like every other department in that budget has people and specific assignments, the contingency is a department.
So how does that department go away?
When you don't have, it goes away when you don't have anything, you go for a year with nothing that, maybe some of us, I'm not one of them, are smart enough to see twelve months, fifteen months when you put a budget together, fifteen months in advance, anything that might happen during the year and it doesn't happen. The contingency is there for unexpected necessities. That's what it's there for. And it is a line item, just like any other line item. And I think we were wise to include that this year and I think the results thus far this year support that.
It's a line item under revenues? It's a line item that needs to be funded as the year goes along? Is that not?
No.
Or is it funded immediately?
It's funded like any other, anything else in the budget. Right, I mean, and half of these, you know, we only got fifty percent of the revenues in, so theoretically after six months, we would only have put fifty percent of those monies in the contingency department, right? Is that not correct? If it's a department, then we're funding it through tax or other revenues. Theoretically, you're gonna put, under that theory, you're gonna put fifty percent money in any department. Don't say the right contingency.
That's pretty much what it says. Pretty much, pretty close.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Will you yes, ma'am, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I'm gonna go back to Mr. Rush, the article, council, whether or not we're gonna have a reserve fund established, and I think, I'm just gonna recommend that you put on the agenda for us to take action on it next week to establish a reserve fund and then let's just move on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, this doesn't.
Good. We're going with something else. Let's see, we're.
The committee.
You two. I'll go on the committee now, water and sewer billing procedures. Okay, Mr. Rush?
Yeah, well, we've been, as we said earlier, we've been talking about our rate structure, Cherokee's rate structure, and we've asked Mr. Wood to come forward with the rate structure that's gonna be short-term for us to get the money we need to pay our bills, but I think that we need to look at, and I'm suggesting that the mayor appoint a committee to look at our procedures and policies and make recommendations for our billing procedures for the next fiscal year, presuming that, you know, we're gonna keep the water resources as we have now and we have to, we have to look at it that way. And specifically, I'm thinking of the way we structure our irrigation meter installation and usage and evaluate the equanimity between minimum charges and volume users because I think there was some, some comments by Mr. Hurd about their minimum billing versus our minimum billing, their base charges. And then also, which I'm gonna get into in a little bit, is the recommended procedures for billing credits related to the stormwater utility credit program. And that's just my suggestion, I think we need to look at for the next.
That's a good suggestion and make sure that that will be on our next meeting and we'll all try to appoint that committee at that point and ask the name, try to accomplish those goals there. Anyway, okay. Mr. Rush?
This is gonna be.
Senior.
Yeah, this is gonna be a dicey one because we just dedicated May to senior month and I gotta remind everybody that IR one. But what I'm looking at here is that we have the discounted rate for the senior trash pickup and it was instituted, the data that I have goes back to two thousand, two thousand and five. And the numbers that I show in two thousand and six, we were charging seniors seven dollars and waste management was charging us at fifty. And at the same time, we were charging the regular, non-senior user sixteen dollars and waste management was charging us a little bit twenty-nine cents. So in two thousand and eight, we went up to seven fifty, waste management was then up to eight eighty. And on the, we still kept, we were at sixteen fifty for the regular and waste management was at twelve seventy-eight. What I'm showing here is that the gap is shrinking between the regular pickup and the waste management charges and increasing between the senior and the waste management charges. So what's happening, without getting into great detail, in two thousand and eleven, we're still charging seven fifty to seniors and waste managers, waste management is charging us ten dollars and one cent. And now we've gained something on the other side where waste manager is charging us ten dollars and fifteen cents. And so the gap between the seniors and the regular is only fourteen cents now. So what's happening, we have four thousand customers that are paying sixteen fifty and twelve hundred customers that are paying seven fifty and it's, and those four thousand are now subsidizing the senior trash pickup to the rate of thirty-six thousand dollars a year. And over the four years of this coming contract, that's gonna be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I'm suggest, I'm only trying to look at the level of fairness here to those four thousand people and subsidizing the seniors now. It's up to council what we wanna do and I know, you know, my rate goes up from seven fifty to ten bucks, it goes up, you know, but that's my point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to have that on the agenda two weeks to vote up or down on the two fifty increase for the seniors.
Okay, I was looking, trying to, where in this legend is the garbage house and?
Where? Where?
Oh, except for from the general fund?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, it's a different, different.
I don't know what happened with that.
Let me say, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said I'd like to see it on the agenda in two weeks.
I heard that, I understand. Let me, let me, let me say, when you look at the overall revenues here of the sanitation fund, we've collected fifty-two point two four percent, we've spent forty-five point seven two percent, which means that we've got a cushion in there of about seven percent. And, you know, that, that is obviously compensating for any thirty-six thousand or anything that we're losing by granting the seniors another two dollars and a half off. The question is, do we wanna do away with that? I mean, when the fund itself is already making money anyway, apparently, totally.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We do recognize the fact that we do have seniors. Seniors are not paying out taxes. I think that's an excellent program and I think they, we, I mean, should be thankful, which I am, but also I think that this is not asking for the big stretch, but this is keeping everybody in the city, the citizens, paying their due share. That's. I'll make this as brief as I can because I sent y'all an email saying I'm leaving at eight o'clock, I have to leave at eight, but on the senior garbage pickup, because I think now's a good time to make a couple of points. I checked it in some census data. We've got a lot more people below the poverty level that are working age in the county than we're doing than seniors. In other words, the seniors as a whole group are more well-off than the working people are as far as been in the poverty level or not. Having said that, I woke up in the middle of the night the other night and wrote this brilliant one-page dissertation and I've left copies over there for members of the press, so y'all have to write this down and I'll paraphrase it, all of my senior high school honor students, and it's written with grammatical error, but I'm gonna try this anyway. It sounds like a good idea on the surface, seniors living on a fixed income, everything going up, let's help them out a little bit, help the older folks. The problem I found with that is that not all the seniors are getting the special garbage rates. How could that be? The problem is only the seniors that own their home get the special garbage rate. If you're sixty-two or older, a senior, do not own your home, you're not getting a special rate. There's somewhere around two thousand rental units in Canton. We also have some assisted living places and nursing homes, seniors, and virtually all of them, the owner pays directly to the city or the private company for garbage pickup. The tenant then pays indirectly as a portion of the rent. Therefore, in the city, there's many, many seniors that are not getting the senior rates. And in fact, submit to you for your consideration that in many cases, actually the poorest seniors, who are the renters typically, are not getting the special rate while the richer ones, who are the homeowners, are enjoying the special rates that are subsidized by the working age taxpayers and the less well-off seniors. So I'm gonna propose that we level the playing field and then just see to it that everyone pays the same rate for the same service.
What would that, do you know what that would have to be then? Would it have to be that for us for a break?
Unless we lower, I mean, we could lower the rate because we now have a six dollar gap between what we pay waste management and the sixteen fifty.
So I think that was, we need to know what that rate would be if everybody paid the same.
I would agree with that. We have to know what.
We gotta make, what you have to do is take your, take your amount of money that you get in and at least the number of residents.
We have about fifty, I think that the numbers that I had were four thousand residents who are paying sixteen fifty, twelve hundred and ten who are paying the senior rate. So we're at fifty-two hundred and change as far as the people.
Shouldn't be a hard number to find.
But we need to know what the cost we're paying for that service is. Divide that cost by the equal number of residents.
Roughly, Mr. Mayor, if, if they're charging for seniors ten oh one and they're charging for regular ten fifteen, you're looking at ten bucks. And ten bucks times fifty, fifty-two hundred people, that's, that's what we're paying somewhere in that area.
Question is to me, are we using some of those revenues we're generating from our sanit, from our garbage for other expenditures, other than garbage? My guess is we probably are. Does anybody know? Which would hurt us if we changed it, you know, if we dropped it down.
It probably doesn't. If we dropped it down, we'd have to raise something else.
Have to raise some plans.
My, my point is that everybody needs to pay the same for the same service.
Okay, yes.
I did some checking out in the county. A lot of people have independent garbage collections and my father, being one of them, eighty years old, he pays more than I pay in the city.
Sure.
And there are many in his situation that I talked to, none of them complain and they all, you know, they think they're getting fair price. So I think build the idea that everybody on a level of playing field wants to, I think, I think that's a fair way to do it, is my opinion.
You wouldn't want to apply that to everything though, would you?
Like property taxes for?
Yeah.
That's next.
Yeah, that would be, that'd be a tough sell out there, I suspect.
Same principle.
It is the same principle, no doubt.
Well, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? All right. Stormwater utility program, Bob?
Yes, sir. We, we have, we have a charge for stormwater and we also have an ordinance that says we should have the stormwater utility credit manual. And I believe state law says if you're charging for stormwater, you should have and implement the stormwater utility credit manual. So we have it, it's been drafted and I understand, and what it does, it allows residents and businesses to reduce their stormwater charge if they do certain things and it also allows the schools to totally eliminate their stormwater charge if they do certain things. And several months ago, the schools came to us and asked us to. And several months ago, the schools came to us and asked us to remove the stormwater charge for, for other reasons, but this would give them the opportunity. My understanding is that on August twenty-first in two thousand nine, council did not approve this utility credit manual because there was, for whatever reason, I assume the reason was there was nobody to manage it. Now, I've spoken with Diane Minnick and she said she would be willing, of course, I don't think for free, to, to manage this program for us if we didn't have anybody at City Hall to do it. And I know she's already, as she said last week, she's doing things at the school, teaching them about conservation, which is part of what the school would have to do to alleviate their stuff. So I'm suggesting that we, we take another look at this utility credit manual and that we, we really have to adopt it because it's, you know, we made the law and we should at least abide by it.
There is some history here and I, I would kind of call on some of the other members here that's been here as long as. Regarding what happened with the school system in, in recent history. At one time, you know, they weren't paying that stormwater. And so when we approached them about they need to pay it, you know, they go this credit manual. So we finally decide, okay, we agreed with them that if they were teaching courses to, relative to stormwater, that they'd get credits, but they agreed to that initially. And then sometime after that, they apparently weren't teaching the courses and everything, so they came back and said, we're willing to pay the stormwater fee. So, I mean, that's just a little history and it's probably something that's, I won't tell any of you remember any of that discussion at that time. But that's been within the last, probably two and a half, three years, something like that. Anyway, I think, I think we need to do something there. I don't know, I think we'd need a little bit of an analysis of what it would cost us, what we would, I either lose in stormwater fees or whatever in order to do that, but I think we need to do it.
Is the school paying stormwater fees?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Because Mr. Bryant and myself met with the school and discussed it and it was discussed that they said they are doing some sort of educational program. What we needed was show us what the program is, feedback. And that kind of went along for, I don't know, a month or two and it kind of died because we got off on other issues. And I, that they were really getting hit because of the size of their buildings and parking lots. And we could benefit from it. And we need to keep the relationships going there. So I think we need to go back, revisit it. And I know our fire station would be an excellent training facility because that's what they threw out last week when we were looking at the, the system there. For school, it's not getting that type, I think we realize that. So there is something we can reach across the board and bring it forward again and get that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a problem with that, but I think we did offer that to the school system and they were the ones that failed to comply and offered them to meet these credits. And Ms. Clarity is here and I think she could speak more intelligently to that because this issue first came to us by way of, when they made this request early on. I met with her and she spoke that we did have this program in place, but it was the school system that failed to meet their requirements as well as this program. And she's here, you all, if council wants to hear from her regarding this matter because she was the one that indicated before two of this came up for a vote and it never was acted upon by council. So Ms. Clarity, can you speak, Mr. Mayor, to give you some information, I would like to hold a conversation about this issue.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And then the only comment I want to make is the issue here is not the school. The issue here is the credit manual that provides the school and all the residents an opportunity. So, I mean, we can get into discussion about school, but not worried about that. But I think we should at least put this on the agenda for the next meeting and adopt the.
Well, that's my point, she was the one that, that introduced the program that we didn't act upon. So I don't know if there's any history as to why the council did not act upon this policy.
Our ordinance says we have to have.
Can you, well, I've asked her come up now, can you speak to it? Give us a nickel version, please. Instead of the dollar, give us the nickel version, instead of the dollar version.
Yes, ma'am. There was, there's a certain percentage that they have to teach student laws and they were not meeting that particular percentage was what I recall to be the exact issue at the time when we were in this one, wanted to meet.
And we do, this is a, a part of a stormwater utility program that we, the council, have not acted upon.
That is correct.
I think, let me, let me back up just a minute, a little bit more of this sort of coming back to me. If I'm not mistaken, what happened was they got so far behind in these stormwater fees. They came to us and if you drop this all the way, if you forgive these back pass things at a certain point there, then we'll start paying, we won't start paying them. And I think that's what happened, I don't know if you can call it that way or not, something like that's what happened.
There was, it was very involved.
So they got so far behind, I think we just said, well, you know, they weren't living up to that commitment there on the, the training in any way, and then so they come back and said, well, you know, if you forgive all those, we'll start paying them. And that's what happened. Judge Roach, in fact, I believe, was the one that came, you know, contacted us relative to that discussion because he's the super board attorney.
Mr. Roach, you're going to be putting this on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
I will give you a version, thank you.
Sanctuary Cemetery, Mr. Berry's voice.
Yes, we had, we had some public input about the cemetery, we've had discussions about the cemetery, we've had repairs made out there. And what I would like to do is have Mr. Wood contact a professional cemetery marketing consulting group, partner group, to give us an evaluation of what the cemetery could be in the way of either selling it or us maintaining it and let's get it done one way or the other. Because right now we are using funds to maintain it and it's costing us money and I don't think we're benefiting from it. I'd like to have that on the agenda for the next, but it depends again on how far Mr. Wood will be able to get input for us to look at, we might have to get the input and then wait a meeting to, but let's get that thing off the table.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wood, with my permission, would you please bring Mr. Berry's voice up today on the city in regards to the sanctuary cemetery because we actually had a meeting with Mr. Cato and we are proceeding in that direction. But it's not something that's going to be able to be done by our next council meeting. There are some issues that have come up about the city, the cemetery. Mr. Cato, myself, Mr. Woods, Mr. Dyer and Ms. Wade met on this very issue this afternoon. And we are looking into all possibilities, but there are some more certainties and boundaries that we need to look at before we can consider that particular option.
So, so maybe we could just have a full report at the next meeting, would that, would that be okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's plan to do that at the next council meeting, bring us up to date on what's going on with the, with the cemetery. Is that okay, Mr. Berry's voice? It's fine, it's an easy question.
Mr. Bryant, just borrowing the area council and these items, just a one quick heads up at the next meeting, I'm going to be proposing that we place a hold on our decision for the stripes on Heritage Park walking trail. I got to confess, it was late that night, I was totally ignorant of that subject, I should not have even voted. I've gotten more emails, y'all all have probably, but then I'll meet the other issues. So I'm going to suggest at the next meeting, I'd like that placed on the agenda, please. If we, we, we hold on to anything until we know all the facts.
What is, I think I have something?
I agree with you, I've gotten quite a few emails and calls, I think we could read this back.
What is the status of that, anything now?
Spend the week through your ass. Spend the, the, the night is off.
Okay, that's all. Okay, it's off for now, so I, I suggest that maybe it kind of be off at least until the next meeting.
Can I ask that, Mr. Rush? Excuse me, Mr. Rush? Send out an email and get rid of our telephone numbers.
Let me ask y'all, let me ask y'all something.
That is public information, you know.
It's all right, I, I saw it here as I work.
Oh, the line he gave out on me.
Mr. Wood, you had your comment.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask you something about something else relative to, to Heritage Park. Why do we want adult bicycles in the park? With a striker, don't, why do we want adult bicycles in the park? Children's bicycles, twenty-inch or so smaller, training wheels, that sort of thing, that's fine. Right now, we allow twenty-one speed racing bikes in Heritage Park, I don't know why.
How many, how many are actually out there? I mean, how many, how many adult bikes really go through there generally in a hundred days' time?
I wish Mr. Anderson were here because he's the one who brought it up. Andy.
Oh, Andy, yeah. Well, I know, but Andy, you know, we also, I also had, I believe Eddie Bonner also brought maybe that up.
No, I don't think Eddie.
Eddie Bonner, Eddie Bonner had an experience with related, he did.
He did have something on there too, you know, about that.
Well, Mr. Mayor. I posted the strip thing.
I don't know that we got that far.
Well, I just don't even think this, I don't think we should even consider it because I don't think we should be spending any time on this project at this, at this time. That's my feelings. I guess, yes, I can answer that. Mr. Mayor, wasn't that this Heritage Park biking thing was on the agenda under Mayor's report when it came to first last month?
It probably was because I had had a person that wanted to make a comment or, or that provided information about it.
Okay, because I, I wasn't sure.
In fact, I guess it was Mr. Anderson and he got.
What, what?
Alexander, I'm sorry.
What charity was.
Alexander, yeah, he brought it up in, in November.
Well, I went down there to take a look and to get to that striping, it is going to eat into, and I concur with Mr. Bryant. When the matter came up, I don't think any of us was truly aware of what all of this, this meant. And I concur with your motion that we need to look at it again next month, next, next meeting.
Well, I, the only reason I said let's bring it up at the meeting is I think we're not supposed to vote on stuff now, but I mean, if. I just take my position now, I think it was an ill-advised decision, we need to just forget the striping, let's, let's just use some common sense.
You know, I, I think if we, excuse me, I'll be right back. I wondered from the very beginning why vehicles like bikes and big bikes particularly, you know, were allowed. You got, occasionally you have skating, inline skating of adults, you know. You have some skateboards out there, all of which could potentially interfere with somebody taking a casual walk, which I think was sort of an intended purpose of that at the beginning or job, you know, either one. Now, wait a minute, Jack, you had a comment?
Well, I just want to say, you know, we talked about this originally and I had the, I guess the information that a paint that would be removed easily and it's still there. But, you know, I'm, I'm for whatever the citizens want. And, you know, I still think that even if we do not do a line, that we should turn the other direction, have, have them coming against you instead of behind you because you're always going to have that problem come up. Somebody's going to walk out, sometimes walk up from someone, whether it be bicycles, roller skating, whatever. You're going to have that chance for an accident. I don't care if we have a line or not, that, that's no big deal with that. Someone asked about what the cost that was, it's six hundred and fifty dollars to do the whole thing. It would be removable in a minute, you know, it's one of those things. You know, I just want you to put in the information that everyone, and I'm along with whatever everybody else thinks.
Okay, Mr. Berry, you have something?
Yes, sir. I agree with what the discussion is right now. And we would ask Mr. Wood not to move ahead with our vote that we had two weeks ago. And at our next meeting, we line that on the agenda to rescind our vote, which we hate to have to do from time to time because we do make snap decisions. What people would send that vote, so doesn't happen.
It will be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Got that, okay. On the mayor's report, discussion of street paving projects, Mr. Wood and I looked at some of the, the list of streets that need, needed paving recently and I think that, that had been prepared, I guess, principally by the staff. And I think we need to, I don't think we need to wait much longer till we go ahead and make another short list and get that underway. I think we need to go ahead and do it. I would recommend at this time is that we enlist a, an engineering firm to do the scope of work and the bid and to follow that through to complete. And I think that, you know, we are, we are sending a list to the state for their analysis and evaluation as far as what used to be the law program, it's a different, L T, I don't know what it is now. It's got different, yeah, different letters out there that would, mediation. So if, if we, and most likely we'll get three, maybe four of those streets at the most. And we don't know which ones exactly, but I would suggest that we, we immediately go ahead and enlist some assistance. Pick what we think, what our staff thinks is the next worst three streets or whatever, or four, and begin that process. And we can, if we can do that and we can remove those from the DOT evaluation and they can evaluate the rest of those, it's around ten or twelve or something like that. That's about right. Some, some of our roads, and don't hold me this number, probably half a dozen of them that have rated in those higher areas are in such a deteriorated state that, that the DOT won't resurface them under that program because of the base inadequacy. So those are the ones that we would prioritize and, and take on ourselves, just like we did this, this last half dozen or so. And then those that would qualify for resurfacing, we'll submit to, to the DOT. All right, well, anyway, I'd like to, for that to be maybe on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss and hopefully begin the process and hopefully between now and then that maybe four of the worst streets that, that we have, that we could have a value, bring them back to the, to the next, let's, let's take a look at that. The last time I have a discussion of mayor and council conversation, I think that we come across a situation where some of our records are, are less than adequate relative to how both the mayor and council are to be compensated. And I think, I think this is partially to protect our city manager who should have an equal basis for writing a check to somebody. I'll be able to say the law says or the ordinance says that we do this. But we can't seem to find a chain of, of information that would, that says the compensation is this, it goes to this, it goes to that, from one action to the other. And I think we're probably going to need to reaffirm the, either the existing, I assume probably the existing, what we're doing right now and what has historically been done, probably needs to be reaffirmed through some ordinance or resolution or something so that we do have to back them. Unless the, the actual changes that have occurred historically could be located, which hasn't been the case so far, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just one comment, I, I agree with you, I think we should, you know, somehow clarify what the pay scales are as of right now. But I think we've been in discussion many times about, and we've had people come before us to say that the council and the mayor aren't paid adequately. And I think it would be advisable, since the only time we can make any adjustments in, in any, any future pace there for council is prior to qualifying in an election year. And so this is, this is that time. So my suggestion would be to appoint a citizen committee and if I remember correctly, there are three people. And if I remember correctly, there were three people that came before us and mentioned something about compensation for the council and the mayor. That was Andy Alexander, Bill Grant, and Camila Calle. And I think if you get those three people on the committee, if they're willing to serve, and come up with some recommendations for implementation in the next year, then we could solve some problems.
This year or next year?
No, I mean, they come up with suggestions that would be implemented in the next, after the next election.
Oh, that's a good idea. Okay.
If you voted this year, it can't take effect until January of next year, new terms.
Right. Well, I wasn't, I understand what you're saying, but I was just basically proposing something that would be a housekeeping, a clearing up and making everyone understand. It says, appears to be a gap somewhere along the line there where the compensation in the eighties appeared was like forty-two hundred for the mayor, twenty-four hundred for the council. And then somewhere after that, it got reduced back down. And then it was based on number of meetings for some of us and not to exceed number. And it got kind of complicated. And then somehow or another, the number of meetings that were allowed got changed without apparently either council action or at least we can't find where it was council action. Yes?
Just something I have to add. I'm motioning adjourned.
I will say.
We have a motion? We have a say? Does the person about the same guy? Wouldn't that resolve?